I will go ahead and call to order our December 12th, 2024 City of Longview City Council Meeting. The first thing we will do is our prayer and pledge, which will be led by representatives of Scout Troop 618 from PAC 29 with the Gregton Global Methodist Church. If I could please have come to the front August Ian Tyler Lucas Piper Tucker Miggy, Beatrice and Holden and please stand for the prayer and pledge.
Please bow your heads. For friends who walk with me along the awesome trail, for those who share their care for me, especially when I fail, as the sun rises over the tall lonesome pie, may your care and love for us in all our actions shine. May the Lord bless you, protect you from all evil and bring you to everlasting life. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, guys. Now let them kind of clear out, but the next item on our agenda is presentation of a proclamation recognizing July 21st as Longview Seven U All-Stars Day. So if I could have join me at the front Elijah Cooper, Diego Eskamia, Luke Hayes, Trenton Houghton, Thomas Jones III, Jordan Mann, Decaden McLean, come on up babes, you're coming all the way up, Luke Montgomery, Reed Tyson, Paul Walker, William Wright, and I guess we'll allow their coaches up as well, Dr. Darby Mann, Jason Montgomery, Taylor Houghton and Matt Wright. All right, oh, look at that trophy. Nobody's gonna hold that trophy? Sorry, wrong question. Whereas the Longview Boys Baseball Association has requested that the mayor by proclamation recognize July 21st, 2024 as Longview Seven U All-Star Team Day in the city of Longview, whereas in July of 2024, the Longview Boys Baseball All-Stars Team was undefeated in district, regional and state rounds. Woo-hoo! The next step in their journey had them traveling to Laurel, Mississippi where they had to face tough competition and persevere to finish in first place in the World Series. Their motto, "One team, one dream" perfectly describes their commitment to each other to secure the championship title. We congratulate this dedicated group of young men and their coaches and now therefore I as mayor hereby proclaim July 21st, 2024 as Longview Seven U All-Star Team Day in the city of Longview. Congratulations, young men. And we're gonna take a picture together, too. So don't run away. Congratulations. You don't like pictures? We're so proud of you. Good job. Congratulations. Good job, all of them. Congratulations. All right, next up is Les Rowdy. Presentation of a proclamation recognizing December 12th as Celebrate Shelter Pets Day and introduction of our new shelter director Jenna George, come on up. No trophy, sorry. Jenna, how long have you worked at the animal shelter before you left and came back? Did you open the shelter with us?
Yeah, Jenna helped us open the shelter when it first opened and was a very faithful and excellent employee for a very long time. She left for a short period and we were fortunate to be able to hire her back as the new executive director. So I am personally super excited you're there, you're doing a great job and I am happy and proud to introduce you as our E.D. I am also excited to give you a Celebrate Shelter Pets Day proclamation. Whereas Celebrate Shelter Pets Day raises awareness for the tens of thousands of pets and animals that need adoption from shelters, rescue organizations and rehab centers. Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center employees work tirelessly to help animals in need while volunteers in our community help through donations of time and funds. We do recognize the significant emotional, mental and social benefits of pets who provide companionship and comfort to their owners. Through this proclamation, we hope to raise awareness and motivate individuals and families to find their next forever pet from our Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center. Now therefore I proclaim December 12th, 2024 as Celebrate Shelter Pets Day in the city of Longview. Congratulations.
I have one speaker card tonight from Ms. Brenda Woolridge.
And she stated, my name is Brenda Woolridge. I live at 2217 South 13th Street and I'm not here to complain tonight. I want, first I want to thank the mayor for the presentation that I gave her and she immediately gave to Mr. Archer and Mr. Archer and his crew got immediately on it. I had a drainage problem. We still dealing with it, but we have success. And Mr. Wade, I thank you for representing our community and I also wanted to let you know that I attended two awesome safety meetings that our chief had instigated and started for us and I really enjoyed it and I learned a lot and I pray that we keep that going because we need it. You know, it teaches women how to be safe in their neighborhoods anywhere they go. And also he did not allow us to go to the shooting range. I don't think he trusted us to do that much, right? But he said that's coming and but I just wanted y'all to know that he's doing an awesome job and I thank Mr. Archer for what he's done and what he's doing and I thank the board and thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Woolridge, I want to thank you for taking time to come and say kind words. That means a lot to us and we appreciate you. Merry Christmas.
Oh, yeah. It's all.
And we want to wish you a happy birthday as well.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate y'all.
I do not have any other speaker cards. Would anyone like to come, give a citizen comment and fill out a speaker card when they're done? Seeing none, I will move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that council would like to pull off for consideration or discussion? Yes, what was it? I forgot. It is C. Any others? I'll hold C for discussions and questions. Any others that council has interest in? Good, okay. C is consider a resolution making appointments and reappointments to the lead co-board of directors. That's under my name, so I guess I will take it and I'll ask Ms. Malone to help me with any questions. On there, under our consent agenda is appointing or reappointing, I'm sorry, Rungent Kadali, who's here tonight, to be reappointed as a voting member for a second three-year term, to reappoint Julie Woods as a voting member for a second three-year term, to appoint Joel Hulk as a voting member for his first three-year term, to reappoint Chris Danielson as a non-voting member for a second two-year term, and to appoint Tally Wilkinson as a non-voting member for his first two-year term. Can I answer any questions or ask Ms. Malone to answer any questions?
Yes, I just wanted to know, so on the terms, how many terms do they serve?
I don't think that there are any term limits. Is that correct? Or is there term limits and I'm wrong? Okay. Would you come answer that for me, Ms. Malone?
There are term limits and I do not have written down. I believe it is a two-term limit, so for voting members, two three-year term limits.
Okay, and how they're selected?
So it is an interview process. I know that Wayne Mansfield, our president, CEO and members of our executive committee, so our chairman and others get together with the mayor and city manager to come up with a list of names that have shown interest in the past or those that they feel would be suitable for the board. Those are interviewed and a resume is received and then a recommendation is made to the mayor.
And are there any announcements, like when it's time for them to apply for, if they want to apply for the board?
Um, no.
So will we start doing this, so this is open to the public?
Uh, no, I think it would be kind of a rolling application period. I have had a couple people tell me that they were interested and I just pointed them to Mr. Mansfield, but we don't like the public committees that we do for the city. We don't publicize that because it is kind of special skills that are required. So it is sometimes a, you're looking for an individual that has certain things and you're going out and seeking them. I guess we could talk about if there was a way to let people know that they could apply.
And let people know what skills, what skills we want for that, so they won't be so limited. Thank you and we appreciate everything that y'all do.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good deal. Are we good?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to some zoning items. Zoning item A, a public hearing will be held to consider application Z 2417 filed by DSF Partners and Richard E. Clark. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, mayor, members of council and Mr. McPhee. So the applicant is requesting to rezone this property, which is approximately 20 acres, located east of the intersection of Gilmer Road and Greg Tex Road, north of Winding Way, from agricultural seen in this map to single-family four zoning district. They would like to develop another phase of this subdivision. Currently, it's part of what they call Southern Oaks subdivision, so they would like to build a phase three and four within this property. Planning and zoning commission and staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions, Ms. Choi? This does require a public hearing that I will open at this time. I do not have any speaker cards. Is there anyone that would like to speak during the public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion. This is Michelle's.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion from Steve and a second from John. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item is approved. Zoning item B, a public hearing will be held to consider application Z 2418 filed by the city of Longview requesting a rezone from general retail to sing, single-family zoning district. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. Yes, the city of Longview is requesting to rezone this property seen here on this map from general retail zoning district to single-family four zoning district. Currently, the lots are vacant and one of the property owners would like to build a single-family home on this property. As you can see here on this map, everything around it is zoned single-family four, so it is consistent with surrounding uses and our future land use map. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for Ms. Choi? This item requires a public hearing, which I will open at this time. I do not have any speaker cards. Would anyone like to speak on this item? We'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
And a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Zoning item is approved. Zoning item C, a public hearing will be held to consider application Z 2420 filed by JLF Holding LLC requesting a rezone from heavy commercial to two-family zoning district.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property seen here on this map from heavy commercial to two-family zoning district. The applicant would like to develop this property and put some duplexes on this property. In order to do so, a rezone is necessary. Planning and zoning finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses. There is a duplex just in the north of this property. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions for Ms. Choi? This item does require a public hearing that I will open at this time. Does anyone like to speak on this item? Public hearing is closed. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Zoning item is approved. Zoning item D, a public hearing will be held to consider application Z 2421 filed by the city of Longview requesting a rezone from general retail to single-family.
Thank you. So the city of Longview, we are requesting to rezone this property shown here on this map from general retail zoning district to single-family five zoning district. Currently, there are multiple single-family homes along 7th Street and so staff initiated a rezone to bring this property into compliance with the current UDC. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions, Ms. Choi? Public hearing is open and I do not have any speaker cards. Would anyone like to speak on this item? I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Zoning item is approved. Zoning item E, a public hearing will be held to consider application Z 2422 filed by Kevin Shelley requesting a rezone from retail to single-family.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone property located at 404 West Garfield Drive from general retail shown on this map to single-family three zoning district. In 1987, city council approved a rezone from single-family three to general retail in order to allow for a dental office. This dental office is no longer here and the applicant would like to renovate the property in order to sell it as a single-family home. Because he would like to sell it as a single-family home, it requires a rezone. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Choi? This requires a public hearing that I will open at this time. I have no comment cards. Would anyone like to speak? Public hearing is closed. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Zoning item is approved. Zoning item F, a public hearing will be held to consider a request filed by St. Anthony's Catholic Church to abandon a 15-foot wide alley right-of-way consisting of approximately .093 acres. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is seeking to abandon an unimproved alley, public right-of-way, located between 6th and 7th Streets, north of McGrill and south of Olive Street. St. Anthony's Catholic Church would like to utilize this area as part of their development and it's already been utilized. All public utility companies, along with city staff, have signed off on the proposed abandonment. There are no public infrastructure located in this alleyway. Staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Choi? This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Are there any people that would like to comment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item is approved. Thank you so much, Ms. Choi. Moving on to action item A, consider an ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real property located at 205 East Methvin Street. Mr. Sean Hara.
Good evening. We have some items here tonight related to Heritage Plaza, which you all know is a park located downtown. The Longview Main Street program is probably one of the heaviest users of that park, so it's my pleasure to present tonight. It's a project we've been doing in collaboration with park director John Albertson as well. A little bit of overview, like I said, there's two items that we'll be looking at tonight. First of all, it's the purchase of the property located adjacent to Heritage Plaza for a price of $150,000. This is an opportunity that just recently became available to us, so it was not something that was considered as part of the budget process. So then we'd also be asking for a budget amendment for the purchase plus the closing costs that would be associated with that. Like I said, it is something that has just recently become available and a memo was shared with council in November. The property is located directly between Heritage Plaza and the post office. If you've been to Heritage Plaza before, this is directly behind where the stage is located, so you can see it there in the picture. A little bit of background about Heritage Plaza, as many of you may know, the plaza actually used to be the location of a hotel that fell into disrepair and through a community project that involved the city, that site was turned into a green space with a plaza and of course some historic information as a celebration of Longview's history. Really, for the last 11 years, though, we've really seen the usage of that park increase substantially with the creation of Downtown Live as a concert series and that concert series has continued to grow and grow. And so that park is now being used about 16 times per year for concerts through Downtown Live, but we also do Christmas tree lighting. Dia de los Muertos occurs there, a lot of fun runs located there as well as community-led events. This picture is from just a few weeks ago when we had the Christmas tree lighting and the Heritage Plaza was the center of that event, which also included a street closure and many vendors all up and down throughout that area. We had a lot of people there. If we could go back one picture, we've got an overhead view of a typical Downtown Live concert. If you look in the upper left-hand corner, there are some porta-potties there and those are obviously a necessity because we don't have a permanent restroom located there at the park. So it's always one of the requests that we get for possible improvement, but the plaza is really utilizing just about every square inch available on that property. And so this, this property that is directly behind, you can go ahead and go forward a couple of slides there, the property is about a third of an acre and is currently leased by the property owners to the post office for a little more than $900 a month. Our intention would be if we were to purchase it, that lease continues through May, but we would make that available for lease moving forward until such time that improvements could be made to that property. Some of those potential improvements could be things such as restrooms, also event supply storage. We have also now in the downtown area have quite a few residents that live downtown, but we don't really have a play structure anywhere downtown and so it would be nice to add some place, play features. We're gonna need additional parking and band load in and of course some green space. All of those additions, again, are not currently funded, but that could be considered in future budgets. So that is what we're taking a look at and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Hara?
Yeah, that's a lot of use for that little area.
It's very popular.
So on the lease, you said that it ends in...
The current lease that the current property has, property owner has through the post office, it extends through May. So we would be able to continue that lease through May in which time, again, the council, the city could continue leasing if so desired.
And so with those funds, will they go back to the reserve?
Yes, it would come back to the general fund, I believe.
Okay. I have any other questions?
Yeah. I just want to say thank you for bringing this to us. I think it's my understanding that the owner currently is really only, and I hope it's okay to share, that really is only interested in selling to the city to get a tax deduction by the end of the year with the loss and so good for them, good for us. It helps us add to Heritage Plaza for future, even though we don't have money to build restrooms now, but looking to that, I think that's very exciting. Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Malone.
Can you explain what you just mentioned on the need to sell now and the tax, how that works?
Oh, sure. So if, I believe that we've internally with the city valued it at a higher value than we will be purchasing it for. So if I as the seller am selling it to the city for 150 and let's say it's worth 250, when I file my taxes, I get to take $100,000 deduction off of my income, so it would be beneficial to the owner in that hypothetical situation. They would be doing that on their own taxes. But so it would have a good incentive to sell to us versus trying to sell to somebody else and it wouldn't be super marketable to another person, so it's a good reason there too, but I think we're getting a good deal. Yes.
Mr. Hara, that's, I just want to speak in support of purchasing this property. Heritage Plaza is in District 3. I drive by it all the time. I think it's, you know, we continuously run out of space down there. I know when we have all the food trucks down there as well, it ends up getting really congested just on a normal night. So just to be able to kind of prepare for our growth, there's not really other, any other places to go. So I appreciate you and your staff bringing this to the council and I'm hoping all my other council members will support this as well. Thank you.
I just want to, I know we're gonna have further discussion in the first of January as far as our general reserve. I just want to make sure some of the things that we've already voted on, we don't neglect or, I just want to make sure are taking more money out of our reserve funds concerning when I know we've still got a big expenditure that we've already voted on. It's, we know there's gonna be some cost increase, but I just want to make sure we're, that we move, as we move into January, we move forward and finalize those talks and some of the things that we mentioned like the Stamford Park.
Certainly. Yeah, I agree. It's also pretty great that it's income-producing, so anyway, good job. Do I have a motion?
May I have to approve?
Wait a minute, we're not through talking yet.
Oh, okay. Did you have a comment?
I mean, I can't, I can't accept this until after we have our January meeting because we're chipping away at our reserves without us having any input in it at this point. I think we need to table this and wait until then until we can all sit down and talk about it as a group. Having staff just bring it to us because it's a good deal, I kind of know some of the good deal that's going on on this piece of property. So is it a good deal? It might be one side of it, but the other side, it may not be. So I think we need to sit down and discuss it as a council when we have our meeting in January and if it's still there, it should be still there. We've got other, other things that we need to look at too and $150,000, $156,000 is a lot of money and we are being pushed on this in one meeting without any discussion on it beforehand. So if it's a good deal, I think all of us, all seven of us could sit down and talk about it at that point, unless it's gonna go off the market tomorrow, which I doubt it, knowing some of the circumstances of it, I think we need to sit down and talk about it first. So I can't support it at this time. Not saying I won't support it, but we need to be frugal with how we're spending some of this reserve money besides just saying, well, we've got this piece of property here and this piece of property there. There's property all over town that could probably be had for parks, departments and everything like that and some of that needs to be discussed, I think, in our, in our January meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Purtle. I do have a motion to approve. I do have a second, so I will call for a vote. If you are in favor of approving action item A, please indicate by saying aye.
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 You're gonna have to, any opposed? Okay, that does not pass. Action item A fails, which means we will not consider action item B.
He does want to table it, though.
I want to table it. I'm not saying I'm against it, I just want to table it so we as a group can have a chance to talk about it, you know. You know, how did it get brought to us? Why did it get brought to us? I know some of those circumstances, and I think the rest of the council needs to know some of those circumstances too. So, are we getting a good deal? Maybe, maybe not, you know?
You're talking, you're talking about 11 times cap rate on a property.
John, don't be telling me.
Hey, we each get to talk.
It's an amazing, 11-time cap rate on the property, on something that requires no maintenance or upkeep, just as far as keeping the lease going, in a landlocked plaza area that was heavily utilized? You gotta take advantage of the opportunity to expand that territory when you get a chance to. That's all.
Mr. Wade, did you have a comment?
Yeah, no, I just want to speak again on the fact that, you know, we, and you know, Newstat's comment was 10 times better than mine, so I should defer to that one, but the fact of the matter is, is that, yeah, we're not gonna have an opportunity anytime in the near future to acquire land. At Heritage Plaza, the events there are only gonna get bigger. This summer, they had a concert where they completely blocked off all of downtown, and I would encourage some of my council people to spend a little bit more time down there on weekends and see how congested it is, and see how we do not have the space available, and this being brought to us at the rate in which it is, is one of those opportunities to really take advantage of it. So, and thank you, Newstat, for your comment.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Hara. I will move on to departmental presentation, presentation and discussion regarding the city of...
Do we vote on table in this, or are we voting on the fact that it just doesn't pass?
Well, there was no motion to table. I suppose there could be before I move on to the next one.
I make a motion to table. I mean, 'cause I don't think we should lose this deal.
Well, I think it ends at the end of this, I mean...
And would the year end as well? Are we...
They're gonna want it, find this end of year.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. McPhee.
So, first off, I apologize if council thinks this was brought in a rush. That certainly wasn't the impetus of the move. The owner, it called me directly. We have worked with him in acquiring other properties in the past. The Green was one of the properties that we were involved in purchasing at the time it was purchased or given to the city. He called me, asked if we'd be interested, said if so, he wanted to get it before the end of the year. That was his request, the seller's request, not mine. He said, "I'd be willing to do that. I have other offers on the property," is what he told me. I have no reason not to believe him. He said, "But I really don't have an interest in selling it except for the city. I would, since the city has adjacent interests, that I know they use the property, which currently we use that property, even though we don't have a lease for it, for loading and unloading bands at Heritage Plaza. We tried to..." So I said, "Well, we can, we can agree, but I've got to get, bring this to city council for approval before we move forward with it." And so, that was the impetus of the letter in November, was to make sure that we had some time to try and vet this. When I didn't hear back from that, I really didn't know that there was still opposition to it. I thought I had had discussions with some members of council that were supportive of it. So, again, I've tried to bring this forward for consideration at the time to discuss it. You're right, we do have some pending talks about fund balance and respectful of that, but I felt it was remiss for us not bringing it when we had the opportunity to do that for council's discussion and consideration, approval or disapproval, either way, that is certainly council's prerogative, but I didn't know a better way to get this done within that. We can certainly contact him. I assure you, since it failed, that will be one of my phone calls tomorrow. I will ask him for that, but that is specifically the way the agreement was written that we have signed. So, our current agreement, well, we're gonna have to negotiate a different one should council wish to do that in the future, but he did say it was imperative for him, and I have no knowledge of his personal finances, to do it before the end of the year, and this was our last council meeting, so.
Okay, I have a motion to table. Would we like to second that, or I don't, I mean, I think it might just have to come in.
It kind of kills it, I think, at the end of year.
Yeah, if we can't...
I mean, we don't know necessarily if it kills it, because we have to let Roland talk to him, because he still might be in consideration.
I'll certainly, I don't think...
I mean, that, I don't think that it, that says it's gonna kill it, 'cause we're tabling it, because we're still considering it. I think that you should talk to him first before we say that it's...
Sure. And so, since our existing deal that we've negotiated doesn't, I don't think tabling this, and we can put it back on another agenda as a different one. I don't think you have to table it. This is like failed for lack of a majority, and we'll move on.
Okay. Mr. Dwayne Archer, sorry, you're back up. Departmental presentation regarding the City of Longview's Fleet Services Vehicle Replacement Program.
Yep, Mayor, members of council, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to discuss Fleet Services and our vehicle replacement fund. The Fleet Services Department maintains, repairs, and does the replacement for all of the city fleet. I wanted to include this slide, just so you have a feel for what fleet we have. We have nearly 600 vehicles in our fleet, and as you can see, all different sizes, shapes, and types. I mean, it's quite a fleet that we have. We have two methods that we use for vehicle replacement. For about 13% of the fleet, we use a capital equity program. You all have heard me refer to that as enterprise lease in the past. This is just a better description of what that really is. So we have about 13% that are handled that way. 87% of our fleet, which is 419 vehicles at $35 million, is done through a purchase program. The fire trucks and the garbage trucks are not part of this program. Now, Fleet Services maintains those, but they do not handle the replacement for them. We leave that up to sanitation and the fire department. So let me talk real quickly about the purchasing criteria, how we do that. Every vehicle in the fleet is assigned a class, and then based on that class, then we set certain criterias of the age of the vehicle, the maintenance, and then the hours and miles. And when I say class, so you might say, a line police unit would have a different replacement criteria than maybe a dump truck in Public Works. And so that's how we do that. And then what happens is, the experts in fleet will sit down with the department, will review those items, if anything's meeting the criteria, and then we'll decide what needs to be brought forward to the city manager's office and, of course, to council for replacement. Now, before I go to the next slide, I wanted to share this with you. So to do a real comparison between the lease program or the equity program and the purchase program, I wanted to just show this slide. So when we look at a purchased vehicle, our normal replacement cycle is nine years. So to truly compare that to the equity program, then we have to do two and a quarter vehicles in that nine years is what we would do. So if you want to truly compare it, you have to compare one unit at nine years to 2.25 units as a four-year replacement cycle. Does that make sense? That could be, okay, great. So we actually sold two Chevy Malibus from the equity lease program. Those are the first that we have sold, and so now we have actual numbers that show us how the program has demonstrated for us. So if you look on the green column, that is the capital equity vehicles. You'll see that, like I said, we're buying two and a quarter vehicles, so we spent $40,000 on the acquisition cost of that compared to the purchase of 17. The interest and maintenance cost, you'll see maintenance. Now, I will say, this is a Chevy Malibu. These are not driven hard. If this would have been a Public Works pickup, for instance, it would have been a significantly higher maintenance cost. So in the nine-year total, that shows you that the cost of that capital equity is $52,000 compared to the purchase of 28. But the thing that really works for the capital equity is the sell of the vehicle. So you can see, we sold those two and a quarter vehicles, would sell for $29,000 compared to that $7,000 for the one purchase vehicle. So the cost of ownership per year, it is slightly cheaper, about $10 a month for the purchase vehicle, but there's a lot of benefits that come with it that I want to kind of go over as well. Excuse me. So we own the equity in the vehicle, so it's really, the only thing that's different is, we own it, it's just that we've done the capital equity as far as how we finance the vehicle. That allowed us to catch up our replacement plan, 'cause we had gotten a little bit behind, but this allowed us to catch that up. All of our vehicles replaced every four years, so there are benefits to that, replacing them every four years. Fuel economy, we saw a $42,000 savings just from what we did in the past fiscal year to this one, just because we have newer vehicles. And then probably the biggest benefit that we get is all of those technicians that used to work on these smaller vehicles are now working on larger vehicles. So we had an example of, we had an engine in one of the fire trucks that was gonna cost us about $60,000 to rebuild, but our staff was able to do that, 'cause they had the time to be able to get out there and do it, and were able to get that done and save the city $48,000. Now, that's a one-off, I'll give you that, but we have stuff, we have a front end on an engine right now in the Fleet Services that would cost significantly more to have done at a sublet shop and not done in our shop. So, there is some real savings there. And I think with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. Any questions for Mr. Archer?
Yes, I have a question. So you mentioned four years, and then you increased to five years, and then you went back to four years, so are we doing four years or five years?
We're doing four years, but COVID pushed some of the vehicles out to five. So when I mentioned five before, that's what that was.
Okay, and then also, you said that now our mechanics are working on the cars?
No, most, all of them, if they're part of the enterprise or the capital equity program, those are maintained, they have, we pay for a maintenance program for those, so they're maintained by other shops. We can then take our mechanics and say, "Hey, work on the bigger stuff, the ones that cost us more to repair. Do the work on those." So that's the real benefit we see with that.
And so those are the ones that our mechanics are working on out of the vehicles?
Yeah, they're working on the bigger stuff, yes, ma'am.
And did it put a strain on any of the employees as far as like overtime or anything like that?
No. Overtime happens, but no, there's no real strain.
Okay. Thank you.
That was helpful to understand, thank you. And what I remember from your last presentation was, is that we'll soon be at that end of like four to five years where we'll start selling those vehicles, so then it'll be a little easier to understand, like the cycle.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
You also have higher, you have higher car prices then too compared to where used car prices are at now too, from when you bought them.
Yes, yeah, you keep a vehicle for four years and sell it, you're just gonna get a better return on that.
Well, I mean, like the prices for purchase of cars?
Oh, yes.
Post-COVID were very high, and since then, car prices have kind of came down since then.
Yeah, they are, yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
And which vehicles are we doing this on?
We have...
Just the city vehicles or police patrol cars?
The smaller, not police vehicles. The, there's certain vehicles that just doesn't work, and so it's just 13% of our fleet, and that's mainly just admin-type vehicles, pickups and that kind of thing. The ones like a PD unit, you don't want your body style to change significantly, because then you've got to buy all that aftermarket, and so you have that thing for four years, and then the body style changes and you have to buy all the aftermarket, it wouldn't make sense.
Okay. Super. Thanks, Mr. Archer.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate you. And I, we're on to items of community interest. I do want to ask if we will excuse Ms. Gamboa, if I can have a motion for that?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
I'm looking to see, Mr. Purtle. All in favor of excusing Ms. Gamboa? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Mr. Conley, we're starting with you, community interest items.
First, I'd like to say thanks for these little, all these goodies. I hadn't even seen all our, this Christmas ornaments from Longview Animal Care. And the first announcement I have is, I guess first and only, is Longview Transit in partnership with R&amp;K Distributors, your local Budweiser distributor, provides free rides to anyone in Longview City Limits on New Year's Eve. This transportation service is available to or from any Longview destination. Service is offered to the general public, including individuals that have had a couple of drinks or those who simply do not want to drive that evening. Service begins around 8:00 on New Year's Eve and continues until 3:00 in the next morning. So rides can be scheduled simply by calling Longview Transit at (903) 753-2287, extension 10. So, thank you, Longview Transit and R&amp;K Distributors, and put a little din in Uber that night. And I want to say, before we move over to my colleague to the left, from all the people in District 1 and Pine Tree ISD, go Lobos. Let's go.
Ms. Maury, you're up.
Yes, so it is, we're coming around a time for Martin Luther King Junior Day. We are now accepting applications for grand marshal nominations through January 10 at Some of the events that we'll be doing this year, on Friday, January 17, there will be a jazz concert at 6:00 PM. Saturday, January 18, will be the celebration parade at 10:00 AM, and then there'll be a community festival at Broughton, and an annual humanitarian celebration. On Monday, January 20, provided it does not snow this year, it will be the MLK march at 11:30 and a memorial ceremony at 12:00 PM. All this information can be found at longviewtexas.gov/mlk.
That it? All right, Mr. Wade, you're up.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Ishihara, and thank you for allowing me to say this tonight as well. Want to wish our Longview Lobo football team very good luck tomorrow as they, well, not tomorrow, I'm sorry, Saturday, as they take on some team out of South Lake. We won't say their name. Game begins at 2:00 PM at SMU Stadium, and if you can't make the game, or you could be there for the Lobo football send-off at 8:05 AM at the Lobo Den parking lot on that same day. Our football team came off an impressive win last week against a really, really talented and respected team from De Soto, and so, you know, Coach King has these guys really rolling this year. We're proud of the work they're doing. We kind of feel like we got a leprechaun working with us, that this may be our year. So, go Lobos. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Newstad.
Nothing to add except for go Lobos and Merry Christmas.
Mr. Purtle?
I need to change the chair as far as... I do have something to say oddly. I had a call today from a gentleman in the community. He was an investor and a developer, and he spoke real highly to me and really made Michael Shirley's department sound really, really good. I also had to deal with Michael and his department this week on a project I'm working on, and you're never too old to learn anything, I can tell you. And Michael and them walked me through something, and I really appreciated him and Terry and Ingrid and all them working with me on this, because if I can understand it, then I can help the other contractors and builders in town when they call and complain, at least get a little bit of help there. So, Michael, I appreciate it. And everybody, we need to have a good holiday and a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McPhee?
Yes, I'd just like to say thank you to council for another year. I wish you all a Merry Christmas to your families, and a Happy New Year, and Merry Christmas to everyone else, and go Lobos.
I have a couple of things tonight. A shout-out to our Longview Fire Department, who was able to send a battalion chief, special ops engine company, and a truck company with 10 personnel to assist in a fire response at the Martin Creek Power Plant. This fire was in a turbine room and did extensive damage, but was able to be isolated to that particular part of the plant, and our LFD supported, played a critical role in helping limit the extent of the incident, which obviously helps that plant, helps the employees there, and it is special training that our fire department gets to respond regionally, and ma'am, we're so proud of them. So thank you, guys, for that. Holiday closing, City of Longview offices will be closed Wednesday, December 25, and Thursday, December 26 for Christmas. We will also be closed Wednesday, January 1 for New Year's. Sanitation collection will shift both of those weeks. Monday and Tuesday collection will be the same, but Wednesday and Thursday will bump back one day. Please help us share that information. And upcoming in January, of course, is our Homeless Resource Day collections. We are gearing up for that and need items for outreach bags. Those items may be brought to Longview Public Library, and for a full list, you can see